The. Grand Forks County Commission will come to order. All commissioners are present. The first matter before us is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion on that? So move. Do we have a second? Motion by Ross, second by Knopf. There's no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the order of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they want? Can we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wants? They have a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, Ingham got there first, I think. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Public health is up. Well, we heard there might be good news from you, so we want to get right to it.
That's fair. Trying to give a little bit of anticipation.
Paige never supposed to start on, so I'll be there pretty soon.
Even was really short today. Chairman of all members of the commission, I'm Michael DuMonte with Grand Forks Public Health here to do a COVID-19 update. Next slide. So looking at where we're at compared to last week and last few weeks, we can continue our rather precipitous downward trend of the number of new cases in Grand Forks County. Falling to 103 cases total last week. That brings us up to just a hair over 22,000. That's the beginning of the pandemic. One of the only thing that I really saw is need to highlight out here is looking at the number of deaths that have been reported out. You know, what I have established many times coming to these meetings is that what we see when we see increases in cases, eventually we see increases in hospitalizations. And then increases in deaths and that portion of the pattern is carrying out. Unfortunately, we have seen over the course of this late fall or winter. We have seen that increasing deaths that has happened, but we will go into a little bit about what's kind of changing in the next slides. When we look at the case rate, I realize I'm not starting out very cheery, but it will get better. When we look at the case rate, what we are seeing is you can kind of see how it was red for so long. It goes to full red on there when the case rate is over 50 cases per 100,000 in that age group. And you can see how quickly that it fell, especially in some of the major groups like the 10 to 19 age group. So we did see this kind of rapid fall and that's because our case rates were so high that it couldn't really sustain itself well. Sustain itself well without affecting the entire population, but those numbers are very firmly on a downward trend. Particularly in some of these subgroups. I'm not seeing any group that is causing me a particular concern right now, you know, just seeing ones that are, you're doing better than others. Next slide. Last week, the CDC put out new guidance as far as their, what they call the transmission indicator. So previously, they used two factors to come up with an indicator of what your community transmission level is. They use the number of cases in your community as well as a seven day sum per 100,000. And then the percent positivity of PCR tests to come up with, based off of those that came up with a color level. You know, which was based on a four color scale. Grand Forks County since August, yeah, roughly August. You know, early August has been in the red on that. Either orange or red. Now, fast forward to last Friday, they came up with a new level. What they decided was, you know, what we're looking at more is the concern of hospitalizations. We're seeing a decoupling of the cases and hospitalizations. So we want to use that as kind of an indicator. We also want to keep case counts in that, you know, in that. Your kind of classification as well. So they came up with this new system, which you can see on the slide. They're using three factors. You have case rate if it's more than 200 cases per 100,000 as a sum in the last seven days. Using the new number of new COVID admissions per 100,000 in the past seven days. And then the percent of staff in patient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients as a seven day average. They felt confident that they had good data throughout the entire US to use those three measures to come up with these levels. So they put this out on Friday. Grand Forks was in the, in the orange or high transmission level of the three levels on Friday. Fast forward to this week, the numbers right now are looking like we're actually the medium on this. I don't know how often the CDC is going to be updating these measures. So I included that box on the bottom to show that it kind of changed pretty rapidly into, you know, Grand Forks falling into that, you know, medium criteria rather than the high transmission criteria. So what comes with this is the CDC recommendation by masking. At the high transmission level, they recommend universal indoor masking. At the lower transmission levels, like the medium and low, those recommendations do change. Whereas I think at the medium level, individuals who are not at high risk could consider, you know, foregoing masking in indoor public settings. And that glow, you know, those recommendations get a little bit looser as well. Next slide. You know, looking at that rationale and applying it to Grand Forks County, I think a lot of that rationale that the CDC did have does, you know, kind of match with the experience of the CDC was going off of to come up with these. You know, with these new kind of levels for, or transmission levels for the community. So what we saw in the last outbreak, the Omicron outbreak, is we saw this big decoupling. Whereas before, you can see how that line kind of follows really close, you know, increased cases, like increased deaths. We saw an increase in cases, but our death rate actually didn't change dramatically like we saw previously. People did still die. You know, we still saw an increase in deaths. The deaths did kind of fall in all different age groups and things like that. But there was the case fatality rate, so the number of deaths divided by the number of cases went down to 0.2% is where it's at right now. Which is, you know, over a quarter percent less than it had been previously. And the number of hospitalizations did decrease, which you'll see on the next slide. So the big difference between the Omicron outbreak and our previous two kind of bigger outbreaks, so the one in fall of 2020. And 2021, it has been the decrease in the hospitalization rate of individuals. So we went from, you know, having a roughly 3% hospitalization rate, the number of people ending up getting hospitalized out of all of the cases. And now that has moved down to about 1%. So it's decreased significantly. And again, people are still getting hospitalized. And one thing that I did notice when I was looking at this was we're seeing a decrease in hospitalizations. So through the Omicron outbreak, our hospitalization rate stayed relatively flat. Still caused some stress on the system, but stayed relatively flat compared to previous outbreaks. And, you know, but the number of hospitalizations compared to the number of cases was a lot lower. And then finally, my last point with this was the number of fatalities compared to the number of hospitalizations stayed roughly the same. So people are ending up in the hospital, they're at higher risk of death or, you know, about the same risk of death. You know, but the number of people ending up hospitalized they should is more. Next slide. So looking at our bottom line, our case rate continues that rapid decline in Grand Forks County, which is, you know, something that I, has been a very pleasant development. Our testing rate is still relatively high, so we're fairly confident that, you know, we're getting, you're getting a good sample of the population. We aren't catching every single COVID case right now because we are emphasizing at home testing and things like that. But we are still getting a really good picture of what the case rate is of the population and our hospitalizations are decreasing as well. You know, as mentioned, coming into this meeting, Ultra Hospital only has three COVID positive patients today, which is the lowest it's been in a very long time. So again, lots of positive things. Looking at our weaknesses, deaths are continuing to be reported as I started out with. And we're seeing, you know, the death rate kind of go up in a linear fashion, but our case rate has gone, you know, kind of way up and our deaths were linear. So they are still happening, you know, and that's something to weigh out, you know, considering risk in some groups that are still there. We do have the new risk certification, you know, which I think is a welcome development from the CDC to take a different look at what we're looking at for cases. Because otherwise, a lot of places we're going to keep masking for a very, very long time, even though the kind of calculus changed on COVID risk. Looking at the threats, and I think this is a relatively minor threat right now, but I do want to touch on it. The Omicron variant has another subvariant called the VA2 variant. It's, it spreads easier, but it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily cause worse symptoms or anything like that. From the sounds of it, we probably don't have much to worry about with the VA2 variant. You know, one thing I did know today though is we did see a slight increase in the cases. We kind of stopped our rapid downward trend. We didn't finally have a day where our case rate increased. But again, I don't foresee that immediately being a big issue. You know, but the coming weeks will tell us more. If I am open to questions.
Any questions from the commission? We've left a speechless.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emergency management director.
Good evening. It's very quick and easy. It's actually a call night. I just wanted to let the commission know that we are going to be getting some estimates for a full-size desk for our new staff member. And we had Gannon down there, he was just part-time and young, and so he didn't care. Then he sat at this little cubby desk, but Paige is down there 40 hours a week. And so we need to get her an actual desk and a chair and have her go evaluation done for her. We're working with P staff as far as when they're going to be down there training versus when Paige is going to be actually back there working. So I just wanted to let you know we're going to get some estimates and then I'll bring those back to the commission.
My question is, have you looked at the commissioners' desk? Are those too small?
The ones that we just took out of that room? Yeah, those are small. Those are like these.
How about, how about the ones in the basement of the courthouse? Isn't there a bunch of furniture from Rough Riders Industries down there?
Mister, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Those are in pretty rough shape. I know which ones Commissioner Ross is alluding to. In fact, it's, it would be my recommendation that eventually. We figure out whose responsibility is to start going through that basement and get one of those pretty big dumpsters and put them in the parking lot. But those are in pretty rough shape. I, I don't know if that would work out.
Yeah, I'm getting a couple of nods on that and I agree, Mr. Portman. And I'm also agreeing with, we need to take care of that problem in the basement, so I'll be talking to you about that.
Looking forward to it, sir.
That's kind of fire either down there.
Yes.
Man, I think you probably want something that's more of a computer, I guess, that will handle a computer setup.
Correct. And just for your information, I know that we're moving someday. Any of the furniture that we have purchased since I've been here was purchased with common funds, so that will be following up. So my desk, Donna's desk, all of our storage, all of that, all of the tables in the EOC, 12 or 15 of those conference tables. So all of that stuff is company property. So wherever we go, we'll be done. And then do you need me up here for the next item?
This board appointment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Minister Chair Member of the Commission, we have an emergency management board that needs to be made today. We had on record that the term will begin March 5th, but we want to be consistent with the city. And so we would like it actually to start the third.
The third.
Is it the second? Maybe it's the third.
March, March. March, okay.
Just two days.
And that's.
And now we've heard the motion and it's Leah Asta is the only applicant and the board approves of.
Yes, Leah has served on our board. In fact, I think she was appointed right before COVID. So we've seen her once and then we went remote. But she was very enthusiastic. She's a emergency medicine doctor at Ultra and very enthusiastic about serving on the board.
Better half of Mr. Estha from the state.
Correct, she is.
You can tell we said better half, so, but, okay. Yes, we do. Thank you.
Motion to, um. For being able to continue her position on the emergency management board effective March.
Third, I thought. Match what the city is.
Okay. Now, a second from Commissioner Ingham. Any further discussion?
The other question is, does this have to be approved also then by the city?
Yes.
Can they reject it? I'll say go. But I'm going to send this in the next couple of days, saying that the commission has voted to repeal.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Doctor Estha is appointed.
Hey, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Highway Department, Nathan here.
He isn't, he isn't here, but I will.
Take care of it.
His request. But anyhow, what Nick is requesting is, is the purchase of a new halftime pickup. And this is, it's to replace Gerald's pickup that he had, and that was a 2013, and it had 213,000 miles on it. And so, so he's requesting a new pickup and Gerald's pickup, they're still going to keep in the fleet. Because it's in good condition and it's running well and they never had a problem with it. And then what they'll do is they have another one that's in the fleet that they're auctioning off. And so Gerald's pickup will just be rotated within their group. And so they put out bids and there were four, three of them were from in town. But one wouldn't, chose not to give us a quote. Another one took about six weeks to get a quote and then the other, you can see here, is quite expensive. And so a little bit on that one was Nelson Auto Center in Fergus Falls. And we have dealt with them in the past, the county, and, and they came in with a bid of $39,232.76. And the beauty of all of this is that it can be, we actually, they put it up hold for us. Pending the commission's determination decision on that, so we could have it later yet. So my recommendation would be to go ahead or move forward with the, with permission to purchase the F-150. Ford halftime pickup from Nelson Auto Center. And then the auction of the other vehicle. And he does have money in his budget for it, so.
Okay, so are you, you're making a motion to buy that?
I'm making a motion. And Nick is attending the North Dakota Department of DOT Construction Conference in Bismarck, which is why he isn't here today.
A second. Second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Buildings and grounds.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this material to you. Start out with a few items first that were approved at February 1st commission meeting in Dollar Moutz. So we would be short of, for the quotes. I left packets on your desk as, as it was. Late in the game, getting the quotes put together for tonight's meeting. The, to start out with, with carpet for second floor, carpet paint, $50,000 was approved for second floor carpet and repaint. We received three bids for carpet for second floor. And the two contending values would be first, or plus, and or white odor depending on where the person would be at. On extrapolating the discrepancies in a court, in the sense that I asked all vendors to offer a line item for prep. Which would be assisting in furniture moving and items like that, especially with my department having two vacancies for custodial. Currently, if we're not able to help and move all of that on every given day, they would have a prep line item in there. White Odor's left a $0 amount in there rather than getting a fictitious number in there. So their number on the surface looks lower than for a carpet plus. Sterling came in as clearly the highest bid of the three of comparing all, all three tiles. All three carpet tiles were 22 ounce commercial premium backed nylon carpet, all made by Shaw. So they're comparing apples to apples for, for carpet. The, what I'm requesting of the commission is if the commission's desire is to proceed with carpeting on second floor carpet repaint. To proceed with the approval for one of these as well as the painting, which I received three quotes for paint. For, from Premier Painting, Ace Painting and Yield Painters. Yield Painters came in as the low for the repaint of the pods and offices on second floor at $12,000. So rather than $50,000 for that sum of projects, we would be in the 67, $68,000 range without prep. The, if you add the prep in on, on either of them, it brings the numbers up. The Burris and White Odor are nearly identical if you take the prep and repair of the Burris's. Like I say, Sterling is considerably higher. So the consideration would be whether we could go with, if the commission desires, whether we could go with White Odor or Burris for 22. We used previously, just for historicity, we used Sterling on first floor. That being a Shaw product, that color is discontinued. It's no longer available. So staying with the same color theme in the building. We would get very similar or near to it, but not exact, regardless of who we would choose and vendors for that matter. Any questions on that?
So, so the $74,000 bid.
From Sterling.
From Sterling includes the prep.
Includes everything in estimated numbers.
Right. And so then the other two, one of them includes.
A portion.
A portion of it.
Yep.
And then. And so. So if, where would we get people to help? Where would we get people to help?
Either a moving company or a temp service. Temp services are very taxed right now. They're very limited on what we could get in here. Waylands is typically fairly receptive to, to short notice, but. With these contractors willing to include that service into their work, it's probably easiest to use them. It's the, I might add with the concern you can have with Sterling is, this is the quote, this is where it's going to be at. Use them for prep, don't use them for prep. This is the number they expect. The others, it would be a compounded number as they would have to be used or not be used. It would be a number that would increase over time. It's.
But it's considerably higher.
It is considerably higher.
With, with Sterling. I mean, even if you took the 2400 out, it's way higher than the other two. And so, you know, for me, it would be like, I mean, it would be easier because they could do it. And you wouldn't have to go any further to look for somebody that could do that.
Correct.
But again, that's a substantial amount.
Burris and White Odor would both concede to doing prep. It would just be added to the bill.
Right.
This dollar amount would be increased if it's needed and had used. So how close do we get to the larger number?
But even if we went with this 2400, it'd be too high. So Sterling has, and I'm not going to say that. Those services aren't worth it, you know, I mean, $2400, but. Can you know how much that was going to be? That we're going to need?
I wouldn't anticipate it being a large amount of hours while the work's going on. It's likely to be two or three hours a day of moving furniture, moving equipment around from room to room. As there, as there's like one room, you know, we have a work plane hop, statue or, or that, the couple of weeks that it's going to take. How many hours is it going to take two or three people to do that? I can't imagine weekly over 40 hours of working out. But that's, it's, there's $13,000 difference on the Sterling red, so that's too high. So I think we're down to Burris and. White Odor, I'm not sure if there's any difference in their bids or not. The, the one with Burris, I, I have to get to another segment of carpet just in flood update as well. You have to remove the $2930 from Burris because he wouldn't, he wouldn't bid second floor at a minimum re-gluing. And repairing what was punkering from the water damage on second floor. Talking with our insurance adjuster, they have conceded to be doing that entrance and way there. So we wouldn't be tearing up and re-gluing second floor commentary where the water damage was. They will, the insurance company will pay for that replacement. And that's a separate, that becomes a separate job. So we remove 2930 from Burris. That brings it down to 59. Minus some of these prep hours that are in here that White Odor doesn't have here, nearly exactly the same on one layer and the other. So it's a matter of what's the commission's desire, White Odor or Burris.
So White Odor is looking at using a Shaw product that's similar to what was put in the first floor, correct? I mean, they're stating a Shaw 22 ounce nylon. That's what was put in the first floor, is that correct?
We have on first floor and a fourth floor, a Shaw product that is a 24 ounce. That's discontinued. The replacement now is 22 ounce. The, it's a pre-impact 100% nylon, commercial grade carpet tile made by Shaw. The, the product that we put in on first floor is a 100% nylon premium impact made by Shaw as well. The difference is the home room model, if you will, that we put in on first floor was 24 ounce. The new options are either no limits or.
Would that mean no limit?
The, the model.
Oh, okay.
It's like, if you drive a Cadillac, what model Cadillac here? Sound advice, no limits or sound advice are the two models of 22 ounce, 100% nylon, nylon impact Shaw carpet.
White Odor does state it is a Shaw carpet that's sound advice.
Yep.
Um, whereas Burris doesn't say what the type of the carpet is. Um, whereas Burris doesn't say what the type of the carpet is. Um, it's just a carpet tile, oh, no limits, I take that back, so that would be a shop product as well, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yep. There, all three quoted Shaw.
Well, and. Both Bruce and Yvonne are. Well known in our community and I think that positive things about them and so it's, you know, I don't see that. The one one gets anything she needs about, so it's almost like.
Yeah, when you when you compare numbers to numbers, when you break out some of their line items as opposed to what. Was given a fictitious number, what wasn't there. So.
What's your pressure?
I'll go I'll I'll go with the ambiguous statement that commissioner and off that they're both well represented in. I wouldn't necessarily have a preference.
Have you used either one of them before in this building?
In this building, we we did purchase some entrance level entrance carpet that I installed myself in the East End from Yvonne. Yvonne did to all the carpet for Bridgie for the attendant care installation over there. I will add to that West Bridgie had that worked on, Yvonne donated surplus carpet free of charge that that was important in that project. Uh, that that is one. That's one thing that they've done, like say I purchased the entrance carpet on.
Missouri. How about the timing of the getting the job done, are they both equally able to do it, they have stuff in stock or they?
All months of. All of them hold about three weekly time, each one of them for the for the for the amount needed for the, it would be a production run in the in the. In the plant, so it'd be three weeks from notification proceeding, commission chair on on one of them. And then getting it on the installer's schedule as well.
So you said Bruce had put in a number for for moving things if necessary. Does that help them that they'd be willing to do that or is Yvonne willing to do it also, but just didn't give you enough?
Either one will do that, they didn't wanna put a, Yvonne didn't choose to put a a phantom number in there just because. This is what the real product cost is, you don't know what those other numbers would add up to. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we go with the Bible of the perfect growth. To fifty six thousand eight hundred and fifty four cents. I'll second that motion.
Yeah, motion on the second, any further discussion? Hearing none at all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes on the carpet next.
Next one moving forward with the painting for second floor, the three quotes that I received were from Ace. From performance and from yield and yield did the work on first floor when we repainted. And they came in clearly. Low bidder for all using Sherwin Williams Pro Mar two hundred eggshell finish, so they're comparing apples to apples for paint. That was what I required them to 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 quote inner inner quote for material, the rest of it, but painting is is labor. Yield painters came in at twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the pods and offices and second floor because. The vast majority of the comments is all going to be repainted with the wallpaper renewal that we've done and the flood repair that we've done. So it's it's offices and pods and hallways within the pods that they're going to paint the. Next quote up from there was performance at twenty four thousand and pace was seventy six thousand dollars.
It's like, wow, one or two of these didn't quite understand what we wanted done.
We looking back at what we paid pace in thousand eighteen, we paid that sixteen thousand dollars. So he's twelve thousand four hundred and fifty minus the comments, which seems to be about in line with what he charged us then for the complete first floor.
You were satisfied as the work you did the last time?
They it was it was here when I started, but it appears to be holding up fine and doing fine, okay?
Anybody wanna make a motion on this?
Motion that would go with you, you'll pay.
Okay, in a second.
Says Ken.
Second by Commissioner Peach, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yield dangers.
And those were with commission chair or commission.
Signature, yes, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay. So next one to move on forward to with with money that was approved February first that. He if the commission desires to move forward with the project. Needing to approve a larger sum amount for the bathroom remodels on first floor for the men's and women's bathroom. There I I reached out to five contractors. One didn't return my phone call for three attempts with voice mails, two. Were overwhelmed with their current workload and declined to bid and to bid. Uh, the two that bid were Bossa Construction and Craft Masters Construction. Uh, Bossa Construction came in slightly cheaper than Craft Masters, Craft Masters bid bathroom individually. To be a total of sixty four thousand nine hundred and sixty five dollars. And Bossa Construction bid both bathrooms collectively on one line, I am spelling out the same scope of work that that I. Described to both of them, Bossa Construction came in at sixty two, six seventy. But if the commission desires to move forward, we need more than fifty thousand approved and we chair people.
Well, it's a project, it's gotta get done. Any comments, motions or?
Yes, sure question, you I talked to you a little bit earlier, you had good luck with the work that classic has done, as you said.
He's he's worked for me in the past previous to here as well as we do have a little bit of. Resume for that for him here in the building, we last year, you might remember, we hired him. Hired Mike Boss construction for the new door installation and removing the rotating door of the first floor. And he came in very affordable on that project as well as the workmanship. Speaks for itself down in the lobby there, it's it's finished, it's nice, what we expected it to be, so.
And I think we heard somewhere along the line, they they could get at the job right away and they wanna do it before spring's work starts.
He would like a notice to proceed as soon as possible simply because he has a full summer construction. He's looking at multiple houses, he will be building this.
Missouri.
I'm giving the fact it's a little bit and you have confidence in my project, be awarded to Bossa Construction, is that? We have to add what twelve thousand six seventy eight from what capital improvements to make this work, right?
And that'll be with chair signature, okay, we have a motion from Commissioner again, second commissioner, no any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Good to go.
I might add on that project particularly, which I failed to mention thus far, was following suit with the with the. With the gray beam that was brought in with the tile work on the first floor, that would follow into the bathrooms then for the tile work in there. So it would be. It would be integrated in looking the same, the new bathroom partitions would be considered. They're considered a speckled granite to what their what their colors is on that, so everything would be that. Modern day lighter gray, you know, gray to silver deep, which the lobby already has, those colors were selected four years ago. Last thing I add that I wanted to bring to your attention in in the flood recovery efforts. For second and third, uh, repair work is nearly done, there's some. Baseboard to put on and whatnot, and then now the insurance company has approved to be the second floor. Commentary off of the elevators in front of the bathroom, second carpet, so that is yet, that is work yet to be done there. However, with the the third floor waterfall was the point of failure that flooded the building. And in order to repair all the sheet rock and bug damage and mitigate any moisture contamination, the first floor and second floor waterfalls. Were removed for a period of time and when the contractors, when the landry went to reinstall them. One compressor has failed, uh, so it's no longer cooling waterfall, the other one leaked from three points within the waterfall. When they turn the water out, but their concern is. They wanna put something on the wall that could potentially be a problem down the line. The quote that was received for the insurance company to pay for the failed water waterfall of thirty three forty seven. Which insurance is paying for third floor is still good to do first and second floor to replace those. If the commission desired to replace them with the.
I have a question, and it just seems to me that we've got one that failed, two that are heading in that direction. And we also have one fourth and fifth and six four, so it seems to me smart if we just replace all five other than the insurance one now. And I think you told me that there's a difference that that these fountains are a better fountain right now too.
Um, um, better is is would be a choice of words. What the difference is is our old phones that we have are ADA compliant fountains, they're pilots. But that is no longer a standard stock by the vendors that supply them to order that exact phone. Would be a special order because everyone's interest, especially the last two years with COVID, has been. Bottle filling stations on the waterfalls, so the one that went in on third floor actually was. Slightly cheaper than to go with what we had as opposed to replace it with a high low with a bottle filling station, so. The quote that I have is for bottle filling station high low waterfalls, so if you go with that on first and second or if you went one, two. Four, five, six with it, they would all have bottle filling stations included, you integrated into them there, it's just built into the.
And they're all high, low.
They're all high, low ADA compliant.
So what with the cost per?
Thirty three forty seven per floor installed.
Times five.
Times five, yeah.
And I think it's a good idea.
We have that much damage if one of them goes down.
We have more, we'll eventually have to.
Yeah.
I mean, even if they don't know function.
So it's.
Well, it seems pretty likely that the ones upstairs on the top three floors are gonna start having price, if the three down comes for us.
Yeah, it would be even worse when it's up on the top.
Redo what we've just already have a process of doing now.
Yeah, right, does anybody wanna make a motion to buy five more water?
I'll move forward to buy five water fountains that are ADA with the bottle filling stations. And with the chair signature using capital improvement funds.
Per the bid from.
From the land.
Okay, we have that motion, do we have a sec?
Second.
Second from Commissioner again, any further discussion on that? All of.
Oh, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I did hear with chair signature on that.
Just right.
Yes, sorry.
And let's see where I'm at, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, please wait a second.
That is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we have human resources next.
Good afternoon, Chair Paul and officials, I'm here to discuss. Juneteenth, which is was recognized last year by the federal government as. A paid holiday for federal employees also was recognized as proclaimed as a recognized holiday by the governor. Of North Dakota and being recognized but not being a paid holiday for state employees. It's been brought to human resources attention several times by a variety of staff, department heads. That this being able to recognize in some fashion Juneteenth would be helpful to. Demonstrate the inclusiveness and diversity, I did send information a little bit of history about the. On holiday and. Juneteenth is short for June nineteenth, it marks the day when the federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas. In eighteen sixty five to take control of the state and ensure that all enslaved people be free. The troops' arrival came a full two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation. And Juneteenth honors the end to slavery in the United States and is considered the longest running African American holiday. I provided in the packet some information about what holidays are recognized in the North Dakota Century Code. As well as copies of the proclamation by both President Biden and Governor Burgum. And a listing of the current holidays that are observed and paid holidays by the county of Grand Forks. So items for your consideration is that Juneteenth is an important day of celebration and recognition. For many citizens throughout years and has gained widespread recognition among federal, state and local governments. As well as other employers, the main increased diversity and inclusion efforts. Grand Forks County is not required to adhere to holidays as applied under the century code. But so the commission can determine which, if any, holidays are observed, whether they're paid or unpaid. If the commission chooses to observe Juneteenth as a paid holiday with office closure, the human service zone employees would be required to utilize available. And we. The three options that I'd like the commission to consider would be whether or not you choose to designate Juneteenth. As an observed paid holiday, designate June thirteen or Juneteenth as a recognized but unpaid holiday. Or you can choose to take no action, so I stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the commission?
Yes.
So you're saying that at the state level, Governor Burgum does not recognize Juneteenth as a holiday. Where so the human service staff that are employed by the state would not be getting any paid holiday time off.
So Governor Burgum did a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth. For it to be a paid holiday for the state, the legislature has to choose to make it a paid holiday. The legislature has recognized the holiday, they have not at this point put forth any legislation to pay it as a holiday.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the state has done the second of the three options that you had here as I.
Let's see if we've got state employees within our building, are they commie staff, some of them? We believe they're still, we're still their employer, however, this piece is covered under the administration.
But in in this building, that's we have social services that are northeast really.
Correct, right.
State guidelines, which.
Correct. We think a motion that we follow what the state is doing. Valium's recognizing it as an important holiday, but it's an unpaid.
Okay, we have a second.
It's not a closure of the building or anything like that, and there could be along with that. We could put together a proclamation that goes as a press release, yes, that would be good. I could work with Mr. Ford.
Mr. Chair, if if. The state legislature decides to make it a paid holiday, would be follows the.
Yeah.
So I think we still just have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Ian. Any further discussion?
So the motion would be not to include the legislature if they decide that that is separate and would come back.
Yeah.
Separately.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, I wouldn't mind making that part of my motion.
Just automatically doing?
Well, we honor whatever, I mean, we would follow whatever the legislators are whenever they're telling us, you know, and as far as in state, they're saying it's a recognized paid holiday. We would certainly follow that. Would we not automatically?
Not automatically.
I, I think we can deal with it if, if they, yeah.
Yeah, later.
So we have a motion and we have the second.
Yeah.
Second, Commissioner Ian. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And now we are down to finance and tax.
To approve the polling places for the twenty twenty-two elections. Now, in twenty twenty, in June, we didn't have a place anywhere. In November, we had one for the whole county, which was the Alara Center. Now, the Alara Center, and we use the arena in November from twenty twenty-four. That worked fine. But come this year, they will not have that space available. We'll have a much smaller space in November. So keep that in mind. And that's kind of why I decided that to go this route, giving the polling sites back to the rural areas. And then having voting centers in the city of Brad Forks, meaning anybody in the whole county can go to either the Alara Center, Icon Arena, Home Economy, or Holy Family. Now, if you're outside the city, we'll have the Alara Center for the Brenner, Bogner, Grantford, and Wally. But they could also go to any one of the other voting centers. And then we'll have Gilby Presbyterian Church. And I had to make sure that all these places have internet access. With our new voting electronic poll books, they have to have internet. And that's the first time that's been a requirement. So I had to change a few places, but I was told Gilby Presbyterian Church has internet. The Laramore Senior Citizen Center has internet with the library that they share a wall with. They don't have internet themselves, but the library that they share the wall with has it. So I was told that's going to be fine. Then Manville Public School, Northwood Community Center did not have internet. They had to get internet to make this happen. Thompson Community Center and then Emmerito City Hall. It used to be held at the Emmerato, Emmerato Community Center. No internet. So now we have to move it over to City Hall and that's what happened besides. That's the bad part.
It'll probably work out there.
Yeah.
We'll try to June and next week. I promise in June, we might have to come back and say, we gotta get them internet a little bit. Um, the school, the Emmerito School would work in June, but not November because the kids use the gym for lunch. That's their lunch room. So that's not going to work for us to use their gym in November. So I need a motion to approve the, the four voting centers within Brad Forks City. And then the polling places outside the city.
I would make that motion.
Mr. Ross, do we have a second?
Second.
With the second, any further discussion on the polling places? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I need a motion to approve the inspectors for the June fourteenth and November eighth twenty twenty-two elections. Diane Bosom for the early voting precinct, which you approved at the last meeting. Amber Guditis for the June fourteenth primary election, and then Whitney Walsh for the November election for the absentee ballot precinct. Dana Mayott for the Alara Center, Debbie Grindi for the Home, Home Economy Voting Center, and Jane Trab for the Icon Voting Center, and Laura Muntzky for the Holy Family Voting Center.
Motion to appoint the following members as inspectors for the June fourteenth
Second.
November eighth, two thousand twenty-two election.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion on the voting inspectors? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Our judges and clerks currently are paid thirteen dollars an hour and judges are paid fifteen dollars an hour. I'm requesting that we increase the hourly rate fifteen dollars for judges and clerks and eighteen dollars for the inspector. There's the one, they are the ones that run the pool and site. We need, I'll need about a hundred and seventy workers. And it's difficult to find these people. And I think I think we're covered in our budget with this increase, but I don't think we can give them. So my request is to increase the pay for the election workers.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the David Debbie just mentioned.
We have a motion to
Second.
pay increase. Second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And the last item is a motion to set polling hours for all polling sites in Brad Forks County from seven AM to seven PM for the twenty twenty-two elections.
So moved. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Good question.
Yes.
Do you have, do you anticipate having to hire staff to work for the mailing ballots this year?
I guess it's hard to say. I, I'm not sure if I will have to do that, but I will be back if I do. We're drowning. And, and you know, we, we did get volunteers from the sheriff's department and the, and the city. So maybe they will help us again. I guess it could be that way.
Okay, after that, we have the Director of Administration, Mr. Ford. You still with us?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I'm still here. I got, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I have two items for the commission's consideration and action. One is masks and one is a project in Northeast. And I apologize for the voice. Just let me know if you can't hear me. I'll try to speak up.
No, you're, you're doing all right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks. So I'll start with the mask. The county's mask policy has been a topic of conversation the last couple of weeks among both county staff and department heads. Currently, there's a, there's a policy that requires facial coverings in, in the county facilities, county office building, county courthouse. Of course, the correctional center, juvenile detention center. However, there's, there's been growing concerns from staff about low compliance in, in the buildings. So not a lot of folks are wearing masks, whether it's staff, whether it's constituents, clients, you name it. But it's, and, and it's now starting to affect or have a real effect on morale of the staff. And, and there is a, there's a hesitation among a lot of staff and, and I understand why to approach individuals not wearing masks because of our current political climate surrounding COVID and masks. It's become quite touchy. So staff are not comfortable approaching people who aren't, aren't wearing masks in the buildings. It, it's also been a topic of discussion at the department head, the recent department head meeting. So I polled the department heads recently to get their thoughts on where they're at with, what their thoughts are on the mask policy. Should it be required? Should we go optional? And I heard back from just about every department head, not all department heads. And, and, and the consensus is department heads and speaking with their staff would like to see the facial covering policy be amended. It, it currently says required. They'd like to see it be amended to optional or, or recommended. Um, I've also had some staff who, they don't want their name shared, so I won't. But I have had some staff call me and say, you know, they would like to see the mask requirement gone. COVID's not going anywhere. It's something we're gonna have to live with. So, so there is concern and that is the consensus. As, as Mr. Doolittle's indicated earlier, we've been downgraded, or I should say upgraded to yellow. And the CDC changed their guidelines recently that if your county is, is in the yellow, the, that it's really just optional, I guess. I think I'm getting that right. Hopefully Cory's nodding along with me. So I, I want to put that out there. U N D has now relaxed their mask policy. And I spoke to Mr. Burkholder, of course, he's concerned that his concerns for his staff, obviously, that's a completely different population. Juvenile detention is a different population. He needs to have a mask requirement in most facilities. The Director of the Human Service Zones is concerned about the requirement, but I think Ms. Thielen has had a discussion with them as well. So I want to put that to the commission on, on what your thoughts are, what you'd like to do with the current required policy. Looks like staff and department heads would like to see that change to recommended, but drop the required. I have discussed it with the COVID committee as well. I've discussed it with, I'm sorry, sir. I've discussed it with public health. And I think that seems to be the consensus at this point.
What, one question, just for clarification, the human service zone, are they asking that we leave it up to their director?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct, sir. And Northeast Human Services reached out to me. They will continue to follow the state. So right now, the state says that their staff and clients have to wear facial coverings.
We don't have any control over that.
No, no, sir.
Oh, in essence, our motion should be that, uh, to make masks optional, but that the human service zone, the correctional center, and the detention center will be left up to their department as to whether masks are worn or not.
I would make that.
Okay. Ross has made that. Second by Commissioner Peach.
Today.
Well, let's make it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I would agree.
They're all, they're all gone though anyway. It's five after five.
Just ask for any, any inputs from public health.
You're okay with this?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I, I thought that perhaps we would be called upon to offer some additional comments. And as a city department that housed in the county office building, we would abide for the most part by what your decisions are for our public interactions. However, we, well, we have some off-site operations and some client interactions that we would maintain masks for. And a couple of things that I just wanted to interject into this decision-making process, because it is your decision, is that, yes, we do have the trajectory on all of our indicators. We're very pleased about that for sure. But we want to ensure that there's an ability to have some flexibility and agility with the policy should those indicators change and not wait for hospitalizations or deaths to increase, but look at some of those early indicators on cases. Because we know surges go up and go down, but they can come back again, too. So I think we all have a vested interest in protecting the vulnerable residents of our county, and we want to continue to do that in any way that we can. So that, those are the summary of my comments that I want to make. Thank you.
So, yeah, we can be fairly flexible. I mean, we can always have a special meeting if something unplanned for would start occurring. You could have a special meeting to change this. So, and with your department, you really are in charge of whether your staff is wearing masks or not. And of course, they're all health professionals, so they know where they need to, so. Okay. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would agree. As someone on the health board, I would agree with, with Debbie's comments. And if we do see a surge in the virus going up by numbers, hospitalizations going up, deaths increasing, then I think it would be important for us to take a look at that as in our county building.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Optional starting tomorrow with the exception of the departments that listed.
Sure, we recommend it.
Optional.
It's optional, I think, optional. Yes, that's the motion I made, yeah.
Commissioner Ross made a motion.
Optional.
Mr. Chair, I have one other item.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, Mr. Ford.
Oh, sorry, did you?
Go ahead. You want to talk to us about Northeast?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, Northeast. I think this will be pretty quick. It's non-controversial. Northeast Human Services, they are looking to do a, a remodel on fourth floor. So all of us who are familiar with fourth floor, they had, Northeast has a reception area. They want to do some security upgrades to protect their intake staff. And it would be very similar to what was just recently done for the state's attorney's office across the street. Um, and it's just protecting their staff, creating a safer environment. They've asked the county to take the lead in, in hiring and procuring the contractor and their services. They will pay for, they being the state, they will pay for everything. So they could reimburse us however we want to do it. But Northeast would, if they go ahead and do it, they have to follow the state's procurement process, which is quite lengthy. And we're looking at a forty-two thousand dollar project. If the county takes the lead and I visited with Ms., visited with Ms. Womstad. And if, if I'm misquoting, she can obviously tell me I'm wrong. But with the county, we really just have to make a good faith effort that, that we are saving the taxpayer dollars. We don't have to go through the whole procurement process. So it would be much faster and much more expedited if the county takes the lead. And as a landlord, that makes sense. Mr. Gasheski received a quote from Masick Construction in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. Mr. Gasheski tried to receive multiple quotes, but the other contractors were not interested because they either didn't need the work or weren't interested in the work. So despite his efforts reaching out to multiple contractors, he was only able to, to receive one quote, and it's the Masick Construction one. So Northeast and I, and I staff support the request. Northeast is asking that we hire Masick to take on the project, procure the project, and Northeast would then reimburse the county. And I would even go one step further. It's a safer house. We get something in writing that, that the state will in fact reimburse the county when the project is completed. I don't know if Ms. Womstad has anything to add.
I, I think you're right. We could have a short memorandum of understanding with that. Yeah, it's pretty simple. Okay, yeah, we agree on that. So any discussion on this or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of that construction project, that we would be, as the landlord, be in charge of it. But all charges would then be assumed by Northeast Human Services.
We probably have to pay it and then bill it back to them. Part of your motion is we get a memorandum of understanding with Northeast as far as them paying that. And any second, second by Commissioner Ross, any more discussion on this?
My only other question would be is if they start the project and they find out we need other things to go My only other question would be is if they start the project and they find out we need other things, bigger bigger things, or and the cost goes up, they would be responsible.
They're responsible for that, that the memorandum would understand would say.
Yeah. So I think it's pretty straightforward project down there. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Yeah, motion has passed. Anything further, Mr. Board?
I know, Mr. Chair, that is all.
Thank you. State's attorney. Okay, committee reports. Mr. Peach.
The airport authority met last Thursday. The construction project of the east-west runway continues to move forward. County Road Five has been adjusted on the west side of of the highway two, and that has gone well. There have been some slight task issues that have had to take place with the contractor. But that project is within budget, and the airport numbers have done well. They have, the airport itself has had been twelfth across the country about. I believe there've been a number of times in the past few months that they have been the twelfth busiest airport in the United States because of the number of planes landing and departing from the airport. So they're now looking at a project with the university as building a new what do you call it? I I lost my train of thought, building a new what do you call it? When the air traffic, air traffic controlling station that would be higher so that they can have a better visual of when the planes are landing and taking off. And so that will be a quite expensive project. The university is not going, does not plan on putting that into a state a bu- building project. They look at, they're looking at doing it as donations coming from donors for aviation. And so that I believe is thirty-six million or something like that. And so they believe that they will be able to accomplish that much sooner by doing donations than waiting to get funding from the state of North Dakota. And I believe Red River, Red River Economic Development is having an annual meeting coming up in April, and I believe all of you were on the email to find out when that is. So I'll make sure you're all by YouTube. I believe that's all I have to report.
I think they were actually number one in the country on the airport, several different dates.
Yes, yes. It's really exciting.
Yeah, amazing.
Hey, Commissioner Ross.
Really don't have anything, just a library board meeting that was last week, and so all is well there. They've been very busy and very creative in what they do and 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 we meet again, I think next Wednesday.
Commissioner Angan.
I attended along with Commissioner Paul in these three months, the township meetings out in Larmour, they're always a great learning experience. We're well attended. I thought maybe it would be sparse, but it was an excellent meeting. The other thing is, recently I met with the sheriff's department. They're going to bring to the commission the concept of leasing their fleet rather than buying vehicles all the time. And before you make a face. It's actually a reasonably good concept. And there are sheriff's departments here and there around the the area that are doing that. So they want to make a presentation with its enterprise leasing pushing this and and coming up with a plan. So, Ms. Nelson, did they talk to you about meeting that in our next meeting? Or is there a discussion yet as to when that presentation could be done?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Angan. They did talk to me, and I suggested that they do a public safety and infrastructure a meeting prior to the commission meeting on the fifteenth, so. Yes.
Right.
And but I haven't heard any more, if that's gonna work or not, because I think they were gonna talk to Enterprise or something and let me know, and I haven't heard yet.
Okay, if we do that, I think it's gonna take more than an hour. I would set it at two o'clock.
And now, Mr. Ross.
MPO, looking for a new director, not on the selection committee, but the the job description is out. We looked at some of the plans coming up for the next couple of years as far as roads within the East Grand Forks and Grand Forks. And the fair board, I didn't make that meeting because I was in the emergency room with a fracture hip. So other than that, that's it.
Good to have you here then. Well, I might as well start with the township meeting. I was there. I spoke at that, actually, segment Swamstead. Sheriff Schneider was there, and Mr. West was there also and spoke. They always love hearing from Mr. West, the popular figure there. And I threw out the idea that we were working on home rule. And, you know, ears perked up immediately at the end when I said possibly twenty percent of the money, which could be as much as a million dollars, to go towards roads, bridges, and culverts. There was, you know, right away in the rural community, they liked that whole concept. So that was just kind of a floating a balloon, travel balloon out there. Oh, yeah. We also had a interview process with Mr. Ross and I were there, along with Icon and a couple of other individuals that were picked to assist. We're reviewing, yeah, construction managers for the correctional center program. We had three presentations, very nice presentations, probably five or six people from each company came and presented for an hour. And then they were rated by everybody that was there. Those ratings were given to Icon because they have to be weighted, some of it is twenty percent, ten percent, whatever. And he has compiled those numbers, and we will be getting back to you with a construction manager. It kind of looked like it was clear favor, and I looked at him, but I avoided math in school anyway, so. Positive, but okay, so that's where that is. The Home Rule Charter, Home Rule Charter Committee met, and Ms. Swamstead, we were, we really appreciated her work. She did quite a bit of work for us. We went through it, made some more changes, but still not a finished product. The charter committee is pushing for a survey to be done relative to home rule the public would be interested in or like parts of it or not, like parts or to have suggestions, whatever. And that's probably primarily coming from Mr. Wilford and Mr. Kwame on the and and they've been involved. It's similar. Wilford has been involved in a home rule charter committee in another area. But they've also been involved in in the surveys. Now, the kicker for us is that it probably was gonna cost twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. And the only way would be for us to pay for it, and then we have to do it in such a way that we're not pro or con as far as the whole rule, we're just soliciting information on. So I think, a- and the other suggestion we had was that we have and and the charter committee would put it together, the questions, and I think primarily Wilford and Kwame are used to making surveys quite often, apparently. Would help do that for us, and then I we we decided, or I think I suggested probably from Ms. Swamstead's office, she told me that we should, we might consider hiring an attorney to review it to make sure that it's not pro or con. And by having our attorney review it, that may not be Yeah, yeah, it might be pro, could be con, but I I think an independent Exactly, the perception, and and so that would be a very modest sum. I think that there are, I'm not sure how many questions there would be. But that survey would be mailed out, and then the results would be compiled by a company. There are apparently two companies that do this. So the question from the committee is, is the commission willing to do this? I don't know that we have any other source of funds to do. Is that fair to say, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I I guess so, unless Madam Monitor has that an idea.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, when we did the Home Rule Charter in two thousand eight, there was a survey done. It was a telephone survey. Well, in twenty twenty-two, that doesn't work.
It's a change.
So what we did do it, or the commission did do it at the time, and I can't recall exactly how much it cost, maybe it was just under twelve thousand dollars. So county funds could be used for that purpose, um, if you are not.
And what fund would that come out of?
The county general.
County general?
As long as we're not trying to sway, and that's critical, so, yes, Commissioner.
I think it's something we almost have to do. We need to know the attitude of the county going forward, and they don't want to just put our heads in the wall without having having some information get out there in a fair way and finding out what people think. I think it's, I think if we're able to hold a charter, we have to do this, I think.
So I think and and Commissioner Peach was at our last meeting. I think if the commission wants to do this, we should maybe have a motion to approve the concept. And we could go back to that group, and they can prepare, and we can also then get an estimate from one of these two companies as the exact cost. And then follow through with that. So we have time because
of that.
Okay, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Opposed.
Commissioner Ross is opposed or in favor. And then maybe I'll talk to the state's attorney about it, to find an independent attorney here and tell them. And then that's all for me.
Okay, I just, I forgot one thing.
Yeah.
This week, I went out to Grand Sky with the legislators for a tour. And they got an earful and an eyeful of everything that's going on out there. They looked very impressed. I I, to continue with the legislative support for the Grand Sky development out there. And they really enjoyed it. They really did. So it was very interesting. More from the state of North Dakota from that, yeah, there was quite a few of them.
One one was from Dickinson.
Rock was out there. Yeah, some of the other guys I first met for the a lot of them from, no, I just like to
Because I'm fortunate to actually get a tour of the base. That would be nice for the people out of the county to see that.
All they said from the general atomics is, there's the base over there.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Matt Matt Dunleavy's trying to put together a UAS consortium in North Dakota. Hence why there was a tour out at Grand Sky. The 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 majority of the attendees were North Dakota legislators, geographically spread out. It was a good mix, but it was targeted at appropriators, which is always a really good thing when we're asking for UL development grants.
Sorry, I left that.
No, that's fine. That was good to bring in. Okay, we're back to unfinished new business. None, how about correspondence? Anything we need to deal with? Me.
The MPO, get reappointed.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. You could do it at this meeting or next meeting because your term doesn't expire until thirty-first of March. But we we do have
Well, we have time.
Do you want to make the appointment to reappoint?
Mr. Ross, why not do it today?
Sure.
Unless somebody else wants to fight for the job.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody want to jump in and say they want the job? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Commissioner Ross is back up for his Friday, is it Friday lunch meeting?
No, no, it's Wednesday at noon.
Wednesday, okay, yes. And then are we down to German?
Yeah.
So move.
Ask a question of Debbie. So on the the Nederin. Yep, you know, we got the letter and all this money. And and so then I'm assuming that the next item right behind it was the dollar amount that we got, twelve thousand, seven oh one. And so I was just confused because it said received of, and it said cash county.
Yeah, they collect money.
They collect the money and then they send it to us. Okay, I was thinking it was the state that collected it. The state office, whoever, never mind that, answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, I guess, motion for German, so move.
Second.
Motion and a second for German, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, I have finally moved to a grace that I can use this name.